Call this meeting to order. Please silence your electronic devices and stand for the invocation given by Councilmember George.
Lord, we lift up our nation to you. We ask for your healing touch to restore peace where there is division. Help us to become peacemakers in our homes, communities, and country. Guide our leaders to work toward unity, justice, and love. May your presence bring reconciliation to broken relationships and healing to the hearts of all. We trust in your ability to mend what is torn and to bring your peace to a hurting land. In the name of our risen Savior, amen. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All speakers should have signed up in advance with the city clerk. Each speaker would please use the podium. Please state your name and address before beginning your statement. You'll be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. The council will not engage in debate with the speaker on the first foul, which means you have 30 seconds left. So please wrap it up because on the second foul, we will have to stop here.
John Roach.
John Roach, 16 W. B. Harris, and another happy ID, not illegal in Harlem. One question for the council president. I see the DRI 2.0 is hoping to get money for the Brisbane building, a couple million dollars. My question is, does that mean that there's nobody interested right now? We've got to put $2 million into it to get anyone interested? Or if somebody's interested, that DRI money might be an extra incentive? I know we put quite a bit of money into it just to keep the building functional, but I was wondering, what was the need for that 2 point or whatever million? Thank you.
Anyone else? Rachel, do you want to answer that, please?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So we do have negotiations ongoing with a private developer for the Brisbane mansion. We hope to come to terms in the next few months and that funding would be directly to a private developer that would put the building on the tax rolls.
Anyone else want to come in? Communications, I see there's none, none here. The next city council meeting will be held Monday, November 10, 2025, 7:00 PM, City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. Today, we have two proclamations for numerous firefighters and police officers. If you want to bring everybody up, we'll do everything else. Ma'am. Sarge? Sarge? Forgive me for starting. We're going to go in chronological order because this started as a police call, correct?
Correct.
So I'm going to read the proclamation for the police officers, and their names are included in here. Whereas just before 11:00 PM on October 18, 2025, officers of the City of Batavia, New York Police Department responded to a call for a welfare check on a person residing in an apartment complex on East Main Street. And whereas upon arrival, the officers to the scene, they located and spoke to the person in the apartment before the person suddenly ran, opened, and attempted to jump out of a nearby fourth-floor window. And whereas officers reacted swiftly without regard for their own safety, as they were able to catch and grab onto the person through the window. And whereas officers continued to hold the person for several minutes, at times only having access to the person's lower legs, as the person hung from outside the window while waiting assistance from fellow officers and firefighters. Whereas officers and firefighters were able to safely pull the person back into their apartment, preventing the person from falling a distance considered to be life-threatening. Now therefore, I, Eugene Jankowski Jr., and the city council, on behalf of the City of Batavia, take extreme pride in recognizing Officer Haley Alfred, Officer Austin Davis, Officer Tyler Stewart, Sergeant Kevin D. Felice, Sergeant Eric Perkins, for their quick and dedicated action and hereby make this proclamation and congratulate them on a well done. Also Sergeant Lindsay. I think this particular, did I mention it? I don't know.
Should be.
Because there's several, and this one might have got missed out. I'm sorry. I want to make sure you're included in this. Also, I'm going to read the firefighter proclamation. Whereas on October 25, firefighters were responding to a call for the police department. On arrival to the scene, they found an individual hanging from the fourth-story apartment. Firefighters reacted swiftly without regard for their own safety, were able to simultaneously assist police inside the apartment, as well as set up a 35-foot ground ladder, and firefighters continued to assist the police officers, holding onto the person while getting a rope around them, while at the same time, members climbed to the furthest extent of the 35-foot ladder to assist. Whereas officers and firefighters were able to safely pull the person back to their apartment, preventing them from falling a distance considered to be life-threatening. I, Eugene Jankowski Jr., and the city council, on behalf of the City of Batavia, take extreme pride in recognizing Captain Michael Morris, Lieutenant Zachariah Kowanlock, firefighter Dwayne Fonda, firefighter Ryan Hines, firefighter Jason Nabel, and firefighter Chad Brady for their quick action and dedication to the community and hereby make this proclamation to congratulate all of our officers and firefighters for a job well done. Thank you. We have one of these reaching the new, your chiefs have them, so we can give them to you.
It's missing a name. The other ones have your name on it.
Is it like CJ?
Yeah, because I write each one, and that one is missing the name.
Josh, do you want to go get pictures in the hall?
Yeah, no, I don't at all. I got them ready. Get a bunch of photos. You don't get too bad because every other one is Tom, Tom, Tom. And I'll just assign the police and fire to you two for one.
It's like it's the Tom meeting. Sorry. All right, continue on with the meeting. We have a public hearing for community development block grant for a micro enterprise. So I have a motion to open the public hearing. Mr. Veely, seconded by Mr. Byakowski, and then I will read it, and then we'll take Tonight, we have one public hearing. Public hearing to submit a community development block grant application for a micro enterprise loan fund. The CDBG program is administered by the New York State Office of Community Renewal, OCR, and will make available to eligible local governments approximately $40 million for the 2025 program year for housing, economic development, public facilities, public infrastructure, and planning activities, with the principal purpose of benefiting low-to-moderate income persons. City of Batavia is considering applying for $300,000 to implement a micro enterprise assistant grant program. This program would provide grants up to $35,000 to offset eligible business expenses to eligible startup or existing micro enterprise businesses within the city who meet the HUD National objective of benefiting low-to-moderate income persons. It's expected that $240,000 of the requested CDBG funds will assist eligible businesses benefiting low-to-moderate income, with the remaining funding utilized for expenses related to program, delivery, and administration. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Veely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Public hearing is not open. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Councilmembers, any comments? Okay, motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Veely, seconded by Mr. Guy. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Veely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is the micro enterprise grant application.
Yes, thank you, council president. As we've stated before, you've seen this entire process once before. We had to redo it when I changed the guidelines for the public hearing publishing notice. So thank you, Heidi Parker, for publishing the notice, and we would like to move forward. I know that Tammy has had a range of businesses get back to her with interest in these low-interest loans and grants, so I'll let Tammy explain a little bit of that.
We are working with the D E C when I say we, with Harrison Studios and a lot for to do the grant application. We did produce a survey and we put it out to the public. We received many responses back of interest. The grants will range from $5,000 to $35,000. They are for startups or small micro enterprise businesses that have less than five employees, well, five or less employees. So it's definitely going to benefit our small businesses throughout the city. This will be citywide. This will not be just for the Bay District.
Tammy, was that five or less employees?
Five or less employees.
All right, I think I heard. Around here, it's pretty common that there's a lot of family or small businesses that are around just about there, a lot of people, so. Anyone have any questions for Tammy or Rachel or anyone else in reference to the matter? So are we in consensus then to move that to a future business meeting? Was there a date, Rachel? Is it the next business?
It'll be the next business meeting.
Which is November?
November 10. Yep.
Okay. I saw one of these in here specifically mentioned November 10, which is the next business meeting anyway. I think it was one of Tom's projects. So we are in consensus to move that to the next business meeting?
Yes.
2026 council meeting schedule.
Yes.
I took a quick look at it. I didn't see any errors. If anybody, if we made a mistake or put the wrong date in, they're all marked 2026. They're all, except for a couple Tuesdays in there, they're all pretty much.
And just a reminder, the first meeting of the year will also be an organizational meeting, followed by your business meeting.
All right, so that'll be January 12.
Correct.
And there is two Tuesday meetings, one in May, one in October. So if you notice an error, if you've got your calendar on, if you notice an error, please let us know red light so we can correct it before the next business meeting because we'll be voting on this then. So if there's no questions, are we in consensus to move that to the next business meeting?
Yes.
Let's move. EchoSense Contract Waste Water Recycling and Aquifer Injection.
Thank you, council president, members of council. I'll directly turn this topic over to Tom Phelps, who has provided you with a presentation and will discuss the proposal we have to contract with EchoSense.
I think that's the one I saw that gets moved to Econs.
Econs, but I call EchoSense, so.
It's okay.
But it's Econs.
The presentation before you is the handout they give out to different organizations. It's originally a Canadian-based company, and now they have a subsidiary in Lockport, New York as well. What they do is they take the discharged water right at this current time from bars and farms and clean it up so they can reuse the water for other features, either cooling or cleaning, and then it gets discharged back into the sewer system. What we're looking to utilize the system for is it's a packaged plant, it's a smaller plant. This is a trial, beta test, and to see if we can clean it good enough so when we discharge it either back into the aquifer or the creek, we can use it as water recharge for the water plant. So instead of our 3 million gallons of water going down the creek to nowhere, we have the possibility of reusing it to turn it back into drinkable and usable water. They are doing this out in California and Arizona way for different items, and there's a small packaged plant. At this time, they're trying to utilize it up in the Buffalo area.
So this would prevent evaporation?
This prevents just putting the water down the creek in 3 million gallons going somewhere else.
Right.
And with the chance, so we're not draining our aquifer completely. Like, we can either recharge it hopefully, or if all else fails, we can put it back in the creek. Because right now, we are to put the water back in the creek, and our water is equal or better than the creek water at this time that we already utilize.
So I'll just add to that. If we were to discharge in the creek upstream of the water plant, it could be a healthier discharge, I'll call it. At many times, the creek gets very stagnant, it gets very murky, and it's difficult to continue to produce. We can produce quality water that's drinkable and meets all standards, but sometimes there's an order to it because we're taking it from the creek. On the other hand, the aquifer is at historic low levels. We are definitely concerned that without a massive winter snowstorm for the next few years and that snow melt, that we will not be able to recharge the aquifer as we historically have, which is going to need to continue to produce water for the City of Batavia and beyond as part of the county water system for the next 15 years. So we are looking at this as a beta test to recycle this water to become an additional source, I'd say, to support our sources of water that we make public water with.
I think it's a great idea. The technology is there. I don't know what else to talk about. And Rachel, this also addresses our permit permitting for the D E C or no?
No.
We still acquire a separate permit if we added another discharge point to the creek. It'd be a second speed east permit. Or if there was an injection well system, there'd be another permit for that process.
This is not to address the state's?
No.
No.
For the beta test, we'll be placing the water directly back into Pond One as clean water and letting it flow through the regular system for the beta test. The price is about $125,000, and I think Tom and I discussed that we believe we might be able to cover it in our existing budget this year in the contingency line for wastewater.
And this test system would fit in our current building out there?
Yes, they've already came out and looked. The only thing we have to do is run a 480-volt line to it. But it already fits there. It's really close by, and they do all the additional work for it.
What is our average gallon per day discharge into a ton of water per acre?
During the summer, about 2 million.
Every discharge is a permit?
Excuse me?
Every discharge needs a permit?
At every point, yes.
And how long's the permit? Is it good? Do we do it?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what we're working on now with regards to the main permit. They're usually five to seven years.
Yeah. You said $125,000. For how long?
This, again, it's just the beta test to see how clean we can get the wastewater.
How long will the test last?
Three to seven months, depending on what results we get. So if results come back perfectly, then we don't need to continue testing. Just the three-month timeframe.
Is there any chance we could pipe this discharged water to the filtration plant and put it back in our system?
Not with the beta test, no. Well, after this, we'd have to present it to the D E C, and then we move forward from there, and then the EPA if they get funding.
Wouldn't we also have to build a new pipeline to do this?
Correct, yes.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We really want to see redundancies for our water plant, especially in recharging the aquifer and/or having, I would say, cleaner water that doesn't have as much turbidity in the creek coming down. And this could be a great solution for that.
Sure, good. So there is the point of having to test it first, so there's going to be a small cost or a large cost depending.
Correct.
It's a lot of money, but it's something we could benefit greatly from in the future, then, what you're saying.
Correct.
So what do you need from us now? Basically, we put this on the agenda to talk about it at the next business meeting and vote on this, or what do you need for us to do?
Yes.
Because it says here, moving to November 10 meeting. What would we be doing at that meeting? Actually, funding the?
Funding it, correct. Yes.
Yeah. Estimated cost for phase one of the pilot project will not exceed $125,000. We're asking council to move this forward to the November 10 meeting.
Right. Yeah, where will $125,000 go?
Directly.
The current budget. I believe we can absorb it in our budget at this time with some technical issues.
Fill the current wastewater operations.
Thanks. Anyone else? So are we in consensus to move this to the November 10 business meeting?
Yes.
Okay, let's get it moved. Theater 56 roof replacement bids.
Yes, thank you, council president. As council remembers, we did have a capital project approved to go ahead and replace the roof over the property the city owns and rents to Theater 56. I'd like to thank Tom Phelps and Lauren Donovan in his office for getting this project through design and out to bid. Bids came back within our budget, $292,650 for Grove Roofing, which is the company that has historically come in lowest on our roof projects. They did the Mall Roof, Mall Roof 2, and the old police station roof over the conference room, I believe. Correct, Sean?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. So Tom, if you want to give any more details, but this is a project that was needed on city property that will protect the asset of the theater.
Once approved, we're looking to move this forward as fast as possible if weather holds off. So as long as we can get days above 32 degrees and without rain or snow, we should be able to move this forward.
And this is the last roof replacement project for the next 20 years?
I hope so.
We have City Hall next.
So as long as we can get to the November 10 meeting, it's just a couple weeks.
Right.
Cutting it close.
Unfortunately, yes.
This is the way it worked out. Intentional. Anyone other questions on that? So are we in consensus to move that to the November 10 business meeting for both?
Yes.
Okay, it gets moved. Streetlight maintenance?
Um, streetlight maintenance, thank you, council president, members of council. The final phase of our LED light replacement project was for the city to contract out additional streetlight maintenance contract. So when we need services that our city electrician cannot provide, we would go, and these pricing would hold for the length of the contract, which is two years?
No, it's renewable.
Okay. So these prices are hourly rates. We're looking to award the contract to Electric of Western New York LLC. They were the lowest bidder per their hourly rates, and Tom can talk about what services they'd provide for us and when we would call them in versus using our own city electrician.
So when, like the Farwell Drive light that has the long power lines that run through trees, we would call them in for that, for their additional bucket trucks and be able to hook up to National Grid. We have several lights that have the wires that are direct wired into National Grid, which we unfortunately can't do ourselves. So we would hire them to hook it up to National Grid, which would allow us not to have to pay National Grid to do this service. This would be a lower rate than that. Also, for the taller poles that we cannot handle within the city, they would come out for emergencies that they were hit, remove them, and then take pictures, submit everything to insurance for us, do all that part, and put the new pole up, with keeping a supply of hopefully at least one of everything in stock at the sewer plant, depending on how many people decide to run into poles during the winter time, actually during the summer this year. Basic stuff we will handle ourselves, but I also have them scheduled to do the water intruded lights because they need to remove nine at a time and put nine back up, and they're going to continue through for warranty coverage. So they'll be able to send them all out, keep track of them, know which lights they're on to next, so we can get rid of all the lights with water in them hopefully before a deep freeze hits.
And for clarity on poles that we own, we all own all the decorative poles you see on Main Street, on Elecet. We also own all the poles on Redfield?
Yes.
And then some underground lines over by Narbor?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
So there's some assets we own there. All the other poles are owned by National Grid, but we own the lighting ourselves now.
And the armature.
Yeah, and we did schedule this maintenance contract in the budget this year for lighting maintenance.
Any questions? Tom, are there any other charges over and above these hourly charges?
There's the truck use charge, and that's the only other one. The competing bidder also had different charges for like the emergency dispatch charge and items like that. That's how this company won out. They're not charging $595 just to show up in an emergency.
So we're not paying an annual service charge?
No, there's no annual service charges. There's no guarantee how much work they'll get. They do, I believe it's Lockport, Buffalo, and I can't remember the third one. They did give references that I did call, and everybody hasn't had any problem.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, what's their response time?
Now, that was another reason I went with them. So for emergencies, they have a three-hour response time, and for a day-to-day operation, it's a three-day response time.
Thank you. Just as a note, the gentleman on Farwell called me and said there was a truck there, and they fixed the light.
Okay.
So I don't know who fixed it. He says, he claims he has photos of it, but he can't recognize the truck brand. So I don't know because he called National Grid originally.
Right.
So I don't know if National Grid showed up and fixed the light.
Which would be surprising because usually they forward it to me.
He claims it's working, and I told him it might just be from the wind, you know, maybe it adjusted the wire and got power to it somehow. He claims that neighbors saw somebody actually working on it. So just so you're aware.
I'll take it as a win.
It's a puzzle at this point. You know, maybe keep your eyes open. Maybe something will come to light on it.
Right.
I just thought I'd pass that on.
Thank you.
He called me too, and then G and O and I, we were over there, and we talked to him again afterwards, and he wanted us to go in the house, make us dinner, but we couldn't.
I don't know anything about that. But anyway, that's what we're at, just so I thought, like, I know. So this sounds like a good backup plan for our electrician to have something in the reserve like this, to be able to call somebody else out to help get to hard-to-reach spots and whatnot. So are we in consensus to move this bid award to the next business meeting for both?
Yes.
Tom, how many electricians do we have that are?
One.
Just one?
I have a lot of helpers.
You have a lot of helpers.
A lot of ground helpers. Assistance to firefighter grant.
Yes, thank you, council president, members of council. The city was awarded $73,600 for the Assistance of Firefighters Grant for Training, Swiftwater Rescue Training Technicians, purchase of turnout gear, new washer extractor, multiple cameras, and patient carbon monoxide monitor, as well as an automatic chest compression device. I would like to thank specifically Captain Bob Fix, Julie Daly, and Chief Grant for their hard work on applying annually to this grant. And Josh, if you have anything to add?
I'm pretty good. I would like to recognize Captain Fix myself. He's been several years being successful at this grant, and again, putting the effort that covers a lot of our expenses, so.
Any other questions? So are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting for a vote? That gets moved. Stop DWI grant.
Yes, thank you, council president. City of Batavia has been successful again in obtaining $4,500 in Stop DWI Grant funding award thanks to Becky Patterson and Chief. The resolution presented accepts the grant, amends the budget. And Sean, do you have anything to add?
No, I'll also just recognize Assistant Chief Camp as he puts in this information on an annual basis. This is for our high-visibility engagement campaign. This is not the regular Stop DWI, so in your package, you will see the dates are actually listed in there. Those are all around holiday season and stuff like that. So there will be another resolution coming forward, hopefully before the end of the year, for the regular Stop DWIs.
And we do get a lot of complaints about traffic complaints, and these programs are essential to have more officers out on details. essential to have more officers out on detail for traffic, specifically for traffic. Sometimes the call volume doesn't allow us to set up for traffic every single day.
Right. Any other questions to answer? Chief, are we making any progress towards getting officers trained for involving drug, drugs and driving?
Uh, Drug Recognition Experts?
Yes.
Unfortunately, we only have one drug recognition expert on staff anymore. One, uh, did not make it through the training, so unfortunately, he wasn't accepted into the program. Um, we reach out annually to the officers to see who's interested in, in obtaining the certification. It is a national certification. It's very difficult. It's one of the most rigorous trainings that an officer can attend. So it, it's difficult to get people to, to be able to go to that, plus you have to have an interest in that type of enforcement work. So, um, it is, it is unique, and unfortunately, we only have one right now. We're very lucky the county has several, um, so whenever we need one, we can usually reach out to Genesee County, um, and they give one of their DRVs as well.
Because I've, I've observed a huge increase of people driving at night now without their lights on, and, uh, you know, something to do with dilated pupils.
It's a very, uh, very good possibility.
Yeah, so that's kind of an answer to the situation. Actually, tonight coming here, I saw two vehicles without lights on. Dangerous situation.
Well, you know, it's funny, because you leave the city, we have streetlights everywhere, and you leave the city and go into the town.
Actually, the new.
Then you, then you notice, oh geez, my lights are out, but it's so bright here, people forget.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I go with.
But it's.
Or they have two peddles.
It's worth a stop. It's worth a stop. There's something going on when they're driving without lights on. Anyone else have anything else to discuss on that? All right, so are we in consensus to move the Stop DWI Grant to the business meeting for a vote?
Yep.
If it's moved. Wastewater Surplus of Vehicles and Equipment?
Yes, thank you, Council President. The wastewater plant wants to surplus a 2012 Ventrak and a 2011 Ford F-350, and I'll let Tom explain what those are. I get the 450. I don't know what a Ventrak is.
The Ventrak is our steep slope mower. Um, at this time, it has a cracked head and they do not supply a motor that will fit this lawnmower anymore or to be able to replace the head for it. So at this time, unfortunately, we have to surplus it out and move into the budget next year, looking to buy, purchase a new lawnmower.
It's only 13 years old. I mean, I get it, but I mean, usually they make it a little longer.
The, the newer ones have, I don't know, I can't remember the two different motors. The newer ones have a different motor inside them, and this motor was only in for a certain amount of time and they, they don't have any answer to it besides.
Of course, it's our luck to have.
Have a great day.
Yeah. Add motor. Anyone else have any concerns or questions on those two, uh, vehicles slash lawnmowers that'll be surplused up?
No.
Okay. So, um, you want to cover the maintenance surplus too at the same time? We're here, we're on the topic, and we can vote.
Tom, cover these as well.
And for the Bureau of Maintenance, we have several items. A couple of them have come in. The number 210 just came in recently and along with, um, the backhoe we replaced this year already, the 1977 swinger is the Bobcat we're replacing, and the dump truck. Several have come in at this time, and we're surplusing out the old ones to make room for the new ones on our inventory list.
It's quite old, 20 years old, so.
And these all go to auction, correct?
Correct, yep.
The ones that are, that can go to auction?
Uh, both lists will be auctioned off.
Okay.
To the highest bidder. We're not just scrapping them. Somebody will give us money for them.
So any questions on the wastewater or maintenance surplus of vehicles? So are we in consensus to move both of those to the next business meeting? VFD Replacement for High Service Pump Number Two?
Yes, thank you, Council President. The Bureau of Water and Wastewater issued a request for bids on October 21st for the replacement of a VFD for High Service Pump Number Two for the water treatment plant. As you'll recall, you just approved the, um, replacement of High Service Pump Number One, correct? Oh, the redo. Is this a purchase then?
This is a purchase.
Okay, so Bailey's going to explain more about this purchase, um, but I will know, as you can see, the bids won't be open till November 7th.
And so that's why the X's are.
And that's why the X's are in the resolution. Go ahead, Bailey.
So the, the VFD died recently, tragically. Well, it was about 25 years old, so it kind of makes sense, but we had to put out a bid for it, um, so we put it out last week and we're going to be opening the bids on November 7th. Um, low, or, sorry, High Service Pump Two is the backup pump to High Service Pump One, which is the one that we're rebuilding and the one that we use 24/7.
And this is intake of the creek water or the well?
This pushes the water out to the.
What does VFD stand for? Obviously, it's something variable, variable frequency drive? Variable frequency drive? That's kind of a, I knew it was some kind of variable drive, but I didn't know that's terrible. So it's not the whole pump, we're just replacing a section of the pump. So the pump will still be in service, but it's a, it's a major part of the pump.
It's the drive that makes it pump, yeah.
Bailey, is that failed totally or is it still in operation?
The VFD?
Yes.
Does not work, no.
No, we've got, we've got pump one on the surface.
Yeah.
It's going to be rebuilt.
Not yet.
Not yet.
No, yeah, pump, pump one is still going. It'll be rebuilt, we're thinking like early spring.
We're going to get, we're going to replace the VFD and pump two, and then we're going to rebuild pump one.
Yes. Yes, the, the VFD for pump one, I believe they were installed around the same time in like 2000, 2002, and that one was replaced. Pump one was replaced, the VFD for pump one was replaced two years ago, I think, so it kind of makes sense that this one.
So then the VFD for pump number two is not going to be a long-term trying to get the replacement and stack, is it?
I don't think so.
In other words, we're not going to be caught without, without a pump to push the water out?
Oh, no, no, yeah.
Because it's going to take a while for, for pump number one to be rebuilt, correct?
Um, we're thinking a couple of weeks.
Oh, okay.
We still have the original pumps as well, still, and that can be turned out.
Yes.
Okay, so we do have that.
Yeah.
Correct.
And so there's layers of.
Redundancy.
Redundancy built in. That's what I thought last time I was there, but I don't remember the whole details.
I can.
Anyone else have any questions? So are we in consensus to move the VFD Replacement for High Service Pump Number Two to the business meeting? And then, by then, we'll have the bids opened and, uh, understand where we're going with that. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Richmond, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Briggs? Yes.
Okay, I now call to order the, uh, special business meeting. We have one agenda item, we can assign that now. Item 131, 2025, awarding purchase contract for City Batavia Trees for Planting. Mr. Beely? Seconded by Mr. Byakowski. So might as well move right into it since we assigned it and we're doing it.
Just read it.
Um, yeah, read it now, please.
Lady Council President, I move a resolution awarding purchase contract for City Batavia Trees for Planting.
Seconded by Mr. Byakowski. Any questions or concern on this? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs? Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Thank you, Council President. Whereas Article 7, Section 105, 1H of the Public Council's Law permits the legislative body of municipality to enter into executive session to discuss the proposed acquisition CR lease of real property or proposed acquisition of securities or state out or exchange of securities held by such public body, but only when publicity would substantially affect the value. Therefore, now therefore be resolved by the council of the City of Batavia, and upon approval of this motion, the city council does hereby enter into executive session.
Seconded by, it's a break. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski? Jankowski?
Yes.